I'd love to call the Budget Workshop to order. It is Wednesday, February 12, 2025, at 1:02 in the afternoon. We have the Budget Workshop from 1:00 to 2:30. City Commission meeting at 3:00. Public hearing at 6:00. It is a full day, so let's get started. Go ahead and turn over Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is the Budget Workshop, single-topic workshop. At around this time each year, we come together to talk about the first-quarter updates. We're finishing the first quarter of our fiscal year, as well as look forward to next fiscal year. It's early, we know that. Some of the estimates are still developing. But we found it to be a really good practice to look forward, lay out the assumptions, you know, and indicate what pattern or what, you know, trends we see in this year. And so that's, again, what we plan to do today. Robert Wigan and his team have done a good job putting the material together. Obviously, we know it's complex. There's a lot of enterprise funds. There's a lot of uncertainty in today's times, and so it makes it difficult to forecast forward. But I feel good about where we are. I think this is a good reflection of what we know today, and we know it will change and there'll be adjustments in the future. But we look forward to the feedback you have and certainly any questions that you have. And so, Mr. Mayor, with that, I will turn it over to Robert to walk us through the presentation.
Robert, once again, thank you to you and your team. You all work year-round on this budget to prepare us to pass a balanced budget by the end of this fiscal year, in the beginning of next fiscal year, and you all do an amazing job. We appreciate you.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and members of the public. We have a number of goals this afternoon. One of our first goals is to, based on the 2020 and 24 success in our strategic plan, is to review the current strategic plan and how it may impact the budget and how we have incorporated those priorities and goals in the budget, all from your discussion at the January retreat. In addition to reviewing those 25 priorities in progress, we'll give you the first-quarter budget status. As City Manager Goad mentioned, the 14 operating funds are closely watched and monitored, not by just our staff, but by each manager and their respective departments for managing their enterprise and general fund responsibilities. One fund does require some specific attention, and we'll address that today. The fire services fees and rates, we've got a requirement there that we'll review and discuss. And then, latter part of the presentation, we'll discuss some early fiscal year '26 budget assumptions. And those are all categorized around revenue, which is the basis for how we operate, ensuring that we have the resources available to accomplish the strategic plan, and the workforce that puts the muscle behind those priorities to move them forward. And then, of course, our operating budgets and our investment in our capital budget. After making it through these workshop goals, we'll take the recommended action, except we'll ask you to take the recommended action to accept the first-quarter budget update as presented, approved budget amendments as included in the update, and then provide additional direction for developing the '26 operating and '26 through '30 capital budgets. Who knew that we'd be looking at fiscal year '30 as a outlier?
Yeah.
I have this theory that if I put it on my calendar, that date is here before I realize it. That scares me. With that, our strategic plan, as you're very familiar, there are a handful, these are a handful of the hundreds of objectives and targets. You know, the budget is the plan to ensure that that strategic plan priority is, they are completed. The budget prioritized those strategic, these strategic investments, such as investing over $600 million in south-site infrastructure and capital improvement projects. We've got the priority that's listed behind each of these. Renewing our commitment to wastewater and stormwater infrastructure improvements with $180 million in capital projects. Now, you may say, oh, well, those are two very specific measures or priorities in our capital budget, but they just represent our $1.2 billion capital budget and bring home what we are doing in the community to support that, to put into implementation that capital budget. We continue to invest in human services through the CHSP process, both in fiscal year '25, which carries over into fiscal year '26. And as we well know, organizations leverage that to serve many, many individuals. Priority of ours is where can we put investment in that multiplies on multiple basis. The budget considers that the Tallahassee Fire Department will strengthen the insurance services office rating for city residents to achieve a Class II rating, which will ensure, which will lower insurance costs for homes and businesses. The budget also provides, supports providing access to parks and rec facilities to ensure that 100% of individuals live within a 10-minute walk to a park or open space. And then, the programs that they implement engage 645,000 participants annually in those programs. And then, from a public safety perspective, the Tallahassee Police Department will increase the number of sworn officers per capita by 5% or 20 officers annually, with 100 over the next five years as a goal. In order to accomplish that, we are closely monitoring and evaluating our 14 operating funds. As a familiar way to encompass all that we look at and evaluate, we've got a table here that shows those 14 operating funds. We identify key metrics in each of the 14 areas. Revenues, of course, the number of participants, the partners that we have, the actual budget that we have, and then where are we during the fiscal year as we progress. We're now in the fifth month of evaluating how that spending is going, how that revenue is being realized. And we then identify those areas where we feel comfortable that we're going to balance the budget by the year-end. And those are indicated by the green symbols that you see there. Red would require action, which we would bring forward, a recommendation in our agenda item, so that we could work towards that balanced budget with some actions. And if you'll recall, we took some of those actions last year when we were balancing Star Metro with some additional ARPA funds that became available. The yellow identifies, in this case, the fire services fund, and I'll provide more detail in a slide that follows this in a few minutes. Our enterprise funds, as we go down the list, we start with our general fund, where we focus the most attention, because it is the most constrained fund when we, when we look at the revenue sources, and I'll discuss that further in detail. And then our enterprise funds, where there is a rate or a fee in place to ensure that they're investing and continuing to meet the high levels of service that are expected. Two key notes here that have changed since we brought this forward. We've got some key drivers that we've considered in Star Metro. There's an agreement for paratransit services that we're reviewing. And in the cemetery, we've added some land in order to enable us to sell more plots. And so we'll pursue that as a fee as we move through this fiscal year. With this constant review and assessing a program of progress, we do ask for your consideration in fiscal year '25 for some immediate actions, some amendments. These amendments allow us to react and responding immediately when there's needs or changes in the budgets. In one case, we've received an additional appropriation of $3,697 for ship funding. We'll ask for that to be amended to the budget, so we can put that into action. There's three capital budget amendments. $4.2 million for the North Apron Improvement and Development Project, an amendment in underground utilities and public infrastructure for $1.9 million, and that's for new intersection improvements and signalization upgrades that we have an opportunity to implement. And then approving amendment for the aviation fund for $500,000 for the International Passenger Processing Facility Project, and that'll account for a construction contingency. And so as we reviewed the budgets with the departments, these came to our attention, and we're bringing those to you for consideration. If it's at all possible, we could dispense with these actions with a vote for these amendments now?
All right. Any discussion on the proposed amendments? Your motion?
It's a motion.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, signed by Commissioner Richardson. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. As I mentioned in our fund review for fiscal year '25 and how we look forward to balancing the budget at fiscal year-end, a fire services fee update is necessary. We've noticed Leon County, we've met with the county, we've checked in with Accenture, which is now the name for Government Services Group, which was our previous consultant, to check on their availability. And we believe that a study is necessary to ensure that the fire service assessment and fees are fully fund fire protection services. Several significant developments are identified here that require this financial review. We did adopt collective bargaining agreements with the International Association of Firefighters. Those are known costs, and so we are aware of those. We've discussed that there's been some reduced annual revenue due to non-payment for services by Leon County schools. That's at a point where it needs attention. And then, we've got scope, design, and construction changes for Fire Station 17 at Lake Bradford Road, and that also includes the planned expansion of Station 15 to follow closely after that. Inflationary costs and then design costs have shown us that those are more expensive than what we planned in the rate study. We also have the strategic plan priority, 5.56, to realize insurance cost savings for the community through lowering the city's ISO rating. That encompasses adding staff, training, more equipment, and so we're including that as part of the analysis as we go forward.
Robert, the Station 15, for clarity, can we let the public know where Station 15 is?
That is...
Bannerman.
Bannerman.
No, no, that's 17, right?
Lake Bradford Road is 15, Bannerman Road, no, I'm sorry.
Bannerman is 15.
Lake Bradford is 17.
Oh, okay.
I know, but I just want the public to know.
Thank you for that clarification. It's too early to tell the impact of where this, the study will go, but early estimates that we look at at a very high level are showing 20% to 25% increase would accommodate that, these considerations, and it'd be about $5 to $6 per month for a residential property. With the cost of services front of mind, this will be a familiar tool that we've shown to you many times. I'd like to take a moment to do a quick dive into this data, because, again, it continues to reinforce the responsibility that we have to budget and make the services that we provide affordable. We look at the basket of services that are provided to residential and commercial properties within the city, and so we look at the property tax bill, the electric bill. We include franchise fees for those entities that aren't served by municipal utility, but instead have a private utility that provide the services. The fire services fee, which we just mentioned, water, solid waste, sewer, and the stormwater bills are all represented here in the variety of colors. We collect this information annually and benchmark ourselves versus the services we provide or and/or where other services are provided privately in these other communities. And as you see, we continue to be among the lowest-cost provider. Of course, we know that our, we don't endeavor to be the lowest, the cheapest, but we do endeavor to be the national leader in public services. And so, not only being the national leader, but also being able to provide services affordably is important. You know, we fulfill our strategic plan targets. As you look down this list of Hollywood, down to Fort Lauderdale, West Palm, Clearwater, into Pensacola, Tallahassee, and Lakeland down the list, where we, some consideration is that we have the second-lowest millage rate, and Fort Lauderdale is just a skosh below us at 4.3738 mills. But for consideration is nearly 40% of our properties are off the tax rolls, and that's why we focus on maintaining that low, that low property tax rate. We are third-lowest in utilities. Lakeland and Orlando are within hundreds of dollars of us annually for what residents will pay. And then, we also, as I've mentioned in the past, is we have the second-largest population and the second-largest landmass to serve. And so, again, those impact cost and volume of services. Not only critical to residents who live here, but also critical to the economy are our small businesses. And so, we look at a restaurant, a small office, and look to see what they also pay. And consistent with the residential costs, we are among the lowest in what we do to provide services and be affordable with our high standards. I mentioned the restaurant, the small office, and then we look at some other industrial complexes to see where the comparatives are, and we feel very confident that we're providing a high-level service in an affordable manner. With that, you know, we meet strategic plan goals. We are the national leader in the delivery of public services. We're fiscally responsible, but our annual challenge starts with our revenue base. We spend most of our time focusing on the general fund because of the very nature of the services it provides. Parks and Recreation, police, improvement in roads and sidewalks, and our capital program. When we look at how those are funded, our most significant general fund revenues are property taxes and contributions from the utilities. In the case of property taxes, you'll notice that we have $71 million to spend in fiscal year '25, and in comparison, our police expenses are $75 million. So, we've got to make up that difference annually, because property taxes have different controls on them. We have Save Our Homes in place to protect homeowners for longer-term living in their properties. We recently just had a constitutional amendment that was passed that increases that $50,000 homestead exemption by CPI, and so that will be growing over the next few years, although not significant this year. In two or three years, it will be. And then, I mentioned earlier that 40% of the tax, 40% of our properties are off the tax rolls. And so with that challenge, we do then look at being an owner of municipal utilities as our, as a very important part of how we provide services. And so with that, the equivalent of a profit in a profit utility is a general fund transfer back into the general fund. You know, that carries a lot of the costs, the differential in cost between police in the property taxes and then in our roads, sidewalks, parks and recreation, and our housing and community resilience. We'll mention, though, that those transfers have a similar constraint on them, in that rating agencies look at them to establish what our, what our, what our cost is to borrow. So, we always meet their requirements to ensure that we're borrowing at the lowest amount of cost to our citizens. There, in the past years, have been attention from the legislature to change the dynamic of that, of that, of that, of the use of those general fund transfers. And so, again, we've always been conscious of keeping those rate at the, at the 10% to 11% threshold that creates, you know, that creates a challenge with the rating agencies. You know, as we get closer to 11% of gross revenue on average, we know that we, we know that we can balance that in sort with, you know, demonstrating our good financial management and our policies that we have in place, so that there's consistency over time in how we follow, follow that, that transfer. They understand that there's policy guidance that will control that and won't let that, won't let that rise above the levels of what's expected.
Robert, the reasons, you know, we expect a contribution from utilities to grow, at least in my house.
Those, those...
Sure. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Commissioner, it's a good question, actually. I think it's worth talking about just for a minute. So, we saw extremely cold, the snow was pretty fun and challenging in its own right, but during that week, we saw very, very cold temperatures, you know, abnormally cold temperatures. And when we see that, usage goes up. We were right at the doorstep of a new all-time peak to van. Had the schools been in session, we would have hit a new peak. We had the generators and the equipment and the facilities, and we were going to meet that peak. But what it really means is our customers' bills would be higher than they normally are. And so, we're sensitive to that. Our customer operations group is working on that with customers as they need help. But we did see that impact bills, and it can happen. Now, good news is, weather's moderated, which goes back the other direction, and overall consumption will start to balance. But for the bill period that captured that week, we did see bills higher, and we're working with our customers in that regard. And that's always a good message, right? So, we've got a great customer operations team, great call center, great customer services, and we've worked through those matters. I will say this, though. Even with the weather that we've experienced, the extreme weather, hot and cold weather, our sales are pretty flat, even with all the growth we've had, all the new customers. And so, that's a, that's a tribute to the conservation we've encouraged. And so, it gets pretty deep. That question gets pretty deep fast, but we've got a good team, and they've been able to balance the budget. And there will be times, sometimes the weather will influence our bills, but overall, our customers are heeding the warning and conserving on balance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to provide input.
Mr. Pro Tem, anything else?
What? Yes, thank you. So, even with these challenges, we're able to address the strategic plan goals. We broaden and improve services to arrive at some of the highlights of the fiscal year '25 budget that we put in place. The budget totaled $1.2 billion across the 14 operating funds and capital expenditures. We continued $8 million in wraparound public safety initiatives that are listed here that we're well-familiar with. And then, we maintained existing levels of operating spending, staffing levels, and service levels for those areas like parks and recreation, public infrastructure, housing and community resilience, and the CHSP program. With the stage set by these fiscal year '25, by this fiscal year '25 progress, the, there are some funding decisions that are critical to define the priorities of the programs, and that's why we're meeting as early as we have results from the fiscal year, to talk about some fiscal year '26 budget assumptions. As we develop these assumptions, they're categorized by revenue expenditures and primarily our workforce, but then also expenditures in operating and investment areas. The first revenue assumption is that the budget sets the millage rate at 4.42 bills for property taxes. The second assumption, as we've discussed, is that we implement a revised fire services assessment and fees on October 1, 2025, to ensure that fire protection services remain fully funded. I'll mention that enterprise, we do assume growth by CPI. We're seeing a very narrowing of that CPI, and so those budgets will have to be, we'll have to consider that. From, for the fiscal year '26 budget assumptions for workforce, from an expenditure perspective, the budget includes a 4% raise for general government employees and also the terms of the collective bargaining agreements that are in place. This includes assumptions about healthcare, pension, and benefits, maintaining the shared costs, but that the responsibility primarily falls to the city and not impacting the take-home pay for individuals in the general government and our bargaining units. From an expenditure standpoint, we consider our operating costs and our investments. We'll maintain our financial performance metrics, AA ratings, our days cash on hand, balance available cash and debt financing. We do that with careful review and management of the capital plan, making sure that money is available in the time of when the, when the construction is occurring, rather than having it lie fallow. And then, when, when other projects accelerate or other projects decelerate, we have the flexibility to move that money to respond to those demands. And I'll mention that other grants and local agency funding sources are critical as partners in how we, in how we balance the budget. Operating costs that I mentioned will be held at fiscal year '25 levels in the utility funds and fee-based areas, can be adjusted by CPI as directed to us by Financing Government Policy 224. We'll continue to invest $4 million in local human service needs and have a robust capital plan to improve infrastructure. Hard conversation that we're going to have as we move forward through the year is that we are seeing that the general fund is estimated at a $3, $3.5 to $5 million deficit. Just with these revenue considerations, maintaining our, improving upon our workforce, maintaining and improving upon programs as directed in the strategic plan, that's something that we will, we will work through. I think it's been coined as sharpening the pencil. We're always looking for where we are sharing costs with partners to make sure that they're available and involved in what we're, what we're costing out and sharing in that cost. Grants are an excellent resource that we've been able to capitalize on. I think $354 million in grants, which is almost as much as property taxes that we've collected in the last five years. And so, we are aggressive in finding other sources to make sure that we meet the expectations that you have.
Robert, do you think we can expect, given the current environment, that we can expect that kind of money to be available from the state government?
You know, it's somewhat unfamiliar territory.
Yeah.
And there's sort of a whiplash day-to-day, but what we're adhering to is that we've been through this in the past. You know, we went through the economic downturn and responded to that. We went through a winter storm recently, a tornado, hurricanes, and while in those cases, we had to rely on reserves, we don't intend to follow that path, but we are staying closely in contact with our federal and state contacts. We are drawing down money as, you know, routinely and as efficiently as we can to make sure that we're, that we're recognizing that changes may come in place. We've got good systems in place, and so, you know, I won't focus on what we can't control, but we'll respond to what we can.
Robert, have we been in touch with our local nonprofit groups who are likely also going to face cuts in federal grants, in state grants, who we rely on for essential social services? And so, are we in communication with them? Because I imagine that there is certainly a risk that people who we've, you know, organizations that we've relied on to provide services that we've funded or not will, you know, could dissolve completely.
Housing and Community Relations is in constant contact. I imagine they're going through the process that they go through annually in, in working with their agencies to submit the monies that match a lot of the monies that are drawn down for providing services. So, yes, we'll, we'll stay in close contact with them and try to understand what the challenges are that they could be facing.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned, we've, we've got these assumptions for revenue expenditures, operating and investment, the general fund deficit. You know, these, these numbers will be refined in the coming months. We've got workshops that are coming up. Well, we work closely with the treasurer, the treasurer clerk, the tax collector, the treasurer clerk, of course, the tax collector and the property appraiser to try to get numbers. But really, the draft numbers are available in June. July are more final numbers, and as we, as we see what those are, you know, it's, we attempt to be good at what we estimate. We don't want to overestimate, because that puts us in a position then in the last minute of making just hard decisions that are impossible to make. And so, you know, we'll, we'll also have final healthcare numbers in August, and then
And so, you know, we'll also have final healthcare numbers in August, and then fire in April and June, we'll have some initial results from our review of fire services. I will mention that as we go through this process, our endeavor is also to operate efficiently. We've got city systems in place to ensure that we're providing services but also holding the line on the budget. In the past, we've adopted and absorbed cost increases while providing the same service capacity and quality. When asphalt costs went up, we still paved the same amount of lane miles, knowing that that was managing of the budgets so that we could accomplish that. We use timing through feedback loops, and so we know that as fleet vehicle costs increase, then we buy them at precise times so that we can also absorb those costs. I think we talked about solid waste vehicles in the past, and light-duty trucks, those prices went up, and we accommodated those within the reserve that we have for that. We adjusted the special reserve fund to replace unexpected payout and did that over a number of years, which allowed us to balance the budget. And so we'll continue to keep these efficiencies, effectiveness, good financial decision-making in place as we go through the year. And I've already mentioned the grant awards, but also mentioned that FEMA Public Assistance Program is critical so that as we expend these funds through these unexpected storms that we get all that money back to replenish the funds that had those expenditures. Again, we're early in the budget process. We'll continue to bring information back as we receive it and as it becomes more clear of what we're working with as we enter the fiscal year. We'll ID and work to address those issues now. There's a number of touchpoints that we have listed here. We've got the April meeting, the June workshop. We've got some preliminary and certified property valuation dates that are out there, and then, of course, the two budgetary adoption dates in September, where we'll have hearings and get feedback from the public. I mentioned that the recommended action at this point is just to accept the first quarter budget update as presented and then provide additional direction for developing the fiscal year 26 operating and 26 through 30 capital budget. Thank you for your time.
All right. Let's open it up. Yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
Where are we with our deficiencies?
Yeah, so our deficiencies fund, we established a plan after using funds during the economic downturn. We are... We are a few... I think we're at about 20% below our target. That target, though, as we look at the fiscal year and any available surpluses and/or any land sales, we expect that we'll restore that in the next few years. We've got that plan in place, and that's always on top of mind.
Yeah. How many years do you think? Back?
It could be anywhere between two, three, I think maybe four years at the longer end.
Mr. Manager.
If I can just add, I think, and you guys will remember the numbers better than me, I think when we embarked upon this journey to fully replenish the deficiencies fund, the balance was somewhere around $20 million with a target of $28, $29 million, if I recall correctly. I believe our current balance is near $28 million in the deficiencies fund, so we've been able to grow it by $8 million over the last few years. Now, the target continues to grow as our budget grows, and so I believe, Commissioner, we're well on pace. And so basically, the actions we've been taking are consistent, and probably two or three years, we should be fully funded.
Yeah, we're actually at about $28.8 million current balance and 82% of the target goal.
Is there a motion to accept the presentation?
Properly moved, signed by the Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Richardson.
Sure, Commissioner Mella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question. On the Leon County Schools' fire services fee, have we looked at the kilowatt price that they pay based on the agreement entered in to pay the fire services fee?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, I believe you're asking about the discount they get. Is that...
That's correct.
Is that fair? We have, and that discount annually is in the neighborhood of $300,000 today. It's dependent upon the cost of electricity and how much they use, of course. And my staff is working with the city attorney's office. I believe it's fair to say we've reached finality in the process related to Leon County Schools paying the fire service fee. They get the discount for electric service conditioned upon a few things, including their agreement to pay the fire service fee. So as we finally declare and have exhausted all efforts to recoup those dollars, that really leads you down the path of revisiting that agreement. And so what we're working on today, make sure we understand the agreement properly, make sure we understand the financial terms of the agreement, is, you know, declaring that to the Leon County Schools, which would essentially stop the discount and, I believe, impose some liquidated damages. But the discount itself is in the neighborhood of $300,000 a year.
Right. Commissioner Mella.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I support that. I think as long as we're charging a fair rate as we would other large entities, but if the agreement was to pay the fire services fee for the discount, certainly it should be reviewed. A couple other things I wanted to just mark for attention, particularly in regard to CPI, just looking at outside agencies that we fund, and whether that's through CHSP or COCA. I know at COCA, you know, staff hasn't had a raise in several years because we don't necessarily budget. Most of their staff services are provided through city funds, and most of the grant money they receive, they can't allocate towards personnel services and those sorts of things. So just if we could be mindful as we budget, you know, things that aren't directly city-related that are also hitting these budgetary concerns that we're running into. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any other business come before us today? All right. We have a city commission meeting at 3:00. See everybody there. Stand adjourned.
Thank you, guys.